All right. City of Norco, City Council, regular meeting agenda for Wednesday, April 4th. Call to order? City Clerk?
Councilmembers Newton?
What call?
Hannah?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes.
All present.
Are there any speaker cards for closed session?
No cards.
With that, recessed closed session. This is reconvening the public session of the City of Norco, City Council, regular meeting for April 4th. And the City Attorney, anything to report on closed session?
Yes, the City Council considered the matters listed on the agenda in closed session, and there are no reportable actions.
All right. And Councilman Newton, Pledge of Legions, please.
I'm ready. This is a pledge of allegiance from the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Renee Parrish from Beacon Hill Assembly for her invocation.
Would you bow your heads with me in prayer? Dear Lord, we thank you for this day, God, and for the celebration of life, God, that we just had this past Easter. And we ask, oh, Lord, that you would bring, God, guidance and direction and insight, Lord, into every decision that our council makes, Father. Your word tells us that if we lack wisdom in anything, to ask of you, God, who gives generously without finding fault. And we thank you for that. And we just ask that you would bring, God, guidance to our council, protection, Lord, to our city, Lord, and prosperity and health to our citizens. We thank you for this, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Renee. All right, I get to go and do a presentation.
Hi, my name's Sophie DeLu, and I recently did a Gold Award project. And for those who don't know what that is, it's basically the equivalent of an Eagle Scout project for Boy Scouts. And I'm a Gold Ambassador Girl Scout, which is the highest level that you can achieve in Girl Scouts. So here's my project.
Well done.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
So we have Matt.
Okay. So it was at the Norco Animal Shelter, and I also did my Silver Award project at the Norco Animal Shelter, which I placed privacy slats at the meet and greet area for the dogs so they couldn't interact with each other, but interact with the possible owner. And as you can see, the kennel area was on dirt, and that was very unsanitary and probably very uncomfortable for the animals to be sleeping on. And there was four enclosures that I removed. So I disabled and removed, disassembled and removed the enclosures. And I was proposing to lay a concrete slab under the enclosures so it's easier to clean for the workers and volunteers, and also more comfortable for the animals. I will also be building, well, I did build, a retaining wall behind the enclosures for protection against the dirt hill behind from rain or wind possibly to come. So we collected a lot of funds for this from personal donations and local businesses, and my project costs about $1,200. So the concrete slab was 3.5 square yards of concrete, and we used lumber for the slab forms to build a formation around it, wire mesh under the concrete for the reinforcement, and the stack blocks of concrete behind, for the retaining wall. So the equipment that we used was a jack shovel and a rotiller for the excavation of the dirt, and wheelbarrows and shovels, and wrenches and screwdrivers to disassemble the cages, and also a string to level the plum, to level out the different sections for the concrete slabs. So we, of course, needed help for this project, so I asked my Girl Scout troop to come, and also my Venture Crew, which, for those who don't know, it's a co-ed Boy Scouts, so it's higher adventure for boys and girls. So we asked them to come, and we helped with taking apart the kennels and cleaning them, and also to start digging up the dirt. So this was the workday one, and as you can see, that's the starting of the building of the retaining wall. So workday two, this was the big concrete day, so we had a huge truck come in behind the shelter and pour in the concrete, and we also generously got the help of a man from my church who helps level the concrete and section it off and help just basically finish it. So that's the concrete. And then I also signed my name a little in there, so it will be remembered. So that's the finished product, basically, and we put back the cages after maybe a week or so after, but the animals that were currently in there had other places to go, so obviously they weren't just out in the open, you know? So we also had the help of our Venture Crew and Girl Scouts put the cages back, and as I said, we pressure washed them, so they're nice and clean, and they're also disinfected. So this is the final product. There's the concrete, and that was my product.
The one thing about the City of Norco, we depend on our volunteers and our young volunteers there's still volunteers. to help us and get things done. All right. Next, our presentation from the former Wiley property by, on the Department of Toxic Substance Now, Brian, get her contacts so we can hire her again at $1,200, that's a pretty good deal. So, but Sophie DeLu, for improving the quality of life in the community by completing a Control, DTSC. And this is Miriam?
Yes.
All right.
Hello, everyone.
project at the Norco Animal Shelter and ultimately earning the Girl Scout Gold Award,
My name is Miriam Tazan Fabbassi. I'm with the Department of Toxic Substances Control.
the highest achievement attainable in the Girl Scout, the U.S., Girl Scouts of the
I want to thank Andy for inviting us to come and speak today for the mayor, all City Council
USA Certificate of Recognition. Thank you, very good job.
members, and everyone present, especially everyone in the audience has taken time out
Appreciate it. Thank you. Who can't run away, because she's going to take a picture.
of their very busy schedules to do some civic engagement. We're really happy to be here and to give everyone an update on the work that's been going on at the former Wiley lab site. Before I go on, I just want to introduce some of the people who are here to support me today. I've got John Scandura, who is the branch chief of the Site Mitigation and Restoration Branch in Cypress Office, Carol Surlin, who's a consultant with Ramble, who's been with this project since the late 1990s, and Dr. Matthew Bethahar, who is a project manager who's filling in for our project manager who's on vacation right now. So what I plan to do is give sort of a high-level overview, and when I'm done, we'd be happy to take questions and see if anyone needs any additional information. So just a real quick background, Wiley is a 400-plus acre property, right, in the Hillside Avenue area. It was used for many years for product testing. They did defense-type products, aerospace products, and different types of consumer products. There's a lot of very sort of high-tech testing that was going on. In this process, they used a lot of chlorinated solvents. One in particular, trichloroethylene, among others, did get released into the environment and became sort of the focal point of our investigation when we became involved. Wiley shut down operations in 2000 and actually vacated the property and left in about 2004. DTSC's involvement started in 2003. We went through several iterations of investigation. We kind of finished our investigations in about the 2008 timeframe, initiated a cleanup process right around the boundary of the site, and started our actual final cleanup plan in 2013. The property is currently, it's not being used, it's fenced, we try our best to restrict public access. We've got ongoing cleanup, both on the site itself and in the neighborhood area, and since Wiley left, the property has changed hands several times. It's currently open, currently owned by the Inland Village LLC. So I'm going to kind of give this really high-level view, show you this diagram of the remedies we have in place, both on the property and off the property. So the first area that I'd like to point out, it's called the northwest area. We have a portion, which is the northwest area of the site, and the sort of larger area that we're looking at, we've got a hydraulic control system and some in-place chemical reduction treatment that's going on in that particular area. Area 33 is right over here. This is where we had some in-place, some heat-based technologies that we were using. Area E is where we've got some phytoremediation, where we're using specific kinds of trees to work in the treatment. We've got area F, which we call the source area over here, where we've got some in-place chemical treatment going on, and the distal end of that particular plume, where we've got a combination of in-place chemical reduction treatment and some monitored natural attenuation, which is basically looking at the natural parameters of the geology and hydrology and the way they interact with the contaminants and watching to see what's happening. So what I'll do is take you through what we're doing onsite, where there is a little bit of overlap, and then I'll take you what we're doing, through what we're doing in the neighborhood. And it was sort of the best way I have been getting a handle on this project. I'm relatively new in the whole life of the project, and I thought that this would be useful for you guys as well. So in that northwestern area that we talked about, which, you know, starts out over here on the site, what we did is that we implemented a hydraulic control system, which is a series of extraction wells and a performance monitoring well network. Basically, what we're doing is that we're extracting groundwater, we're having the consultants extract groundwater, and we're treating the chlorinated solvents. There's a combination of sort of soil gas or like vapor contamination and groundwater contamination, but our focus is that by treating the groundwater, because that is the source of the contamination, we are reducing the soil gas problem as well, so it's a sort of hand-in-hand treatment that we're working on. Since the system was implemented, we have treated more than 50 million gallons of groundwater. The calculations indicate about 1,700 pounds of volatile organic compounds, that's the TCE, the primary one that I mentioned, and some of others. The system has been extremely effective. There's a 99% uptime on that, which is really great. It shows that the system, you know, is well-designed and has been working very effectively. It's been operating as intended and as designed, and it's achieving the cleanup goals that we had set forth for this particular project. We are working on expediting the achievement of cleanup objectives in the off-site portion of this northwestern area, and it's something I'll talk about in a little bit more detail when I get to that particular slide. And so this is sort of a before and after that I wanted to show you. The diagrams are a little bit different because they came from two different reports that were done several years apart, but when we first started, if you look at this sort of bright green line over here, this is the property boundary. And you look at this contour line, which is the TCE contour line, I think it's the 5,000, yeah, the 5,000 line, and it was, it had extended much further. And after the treatment was implemented, you can see, like, here's the boundary line again, and that highest concentration area has been pulled back, so it's completely housed on the property now. So that's something that shows us that the system is operating effectively. And one other thing I just wanted to make clear, I know I say "we" when I talk about the work that's being done, DTSC doesn't do the work. We're actually providing oversight, and the responsible party is doing that work. I just wanted to make that clear to everyone in the audience today. The next area we wanted to talk about, this is that thermal, the NC2 thermal disorption system, that heat-based system that I had mentioned, that has been implemented in Area 33 towards a little bit of the southern portion of the site. It's a very complicated engineering design. There's almost 40 wells that we have installed. There's temperature monitoring points, there's pressure monitoring points, there's these triple-nested vapor probes. And what we did is that we started the heating process in the spring of 2020, do I have the date? Okay, just saw that. So it was a several-month process, there's a typo here, I'll go ahead and correct that, so when you guys get the final slides, you have the correct date. But basically, it ran for several months, and the objectives were achieved, and DTSC approved the shutdown of this particular system. So this thermal disorption, disorption system was found to be very effective for the treatment of the contaminants in this particular area. And of course, there is the post-remediation monitoring that we are having the consultants continue. The phytoremediation, this is something that I'm really excited about. I mean, I think about a quintessential green remediation project, and this is what it is. These are a series of very specific types of trees that studies had shown reduce TCE concentrations through root uptake. So several of these trees, I mean, a lot of work was done into kind of identifying what kinds of trees would work, and these trees were planted in a very specific density range, it's where sort of the biology and the engineering come and combine and work together so well. So these trees are planted, there's a gravity-fed, solar-powered irrigation system, which is also, you know, it's just a really wonderful way for a true classic green remediation to sort of come together. The trees are inspected on a monthly basis, and there's a quarterly groundwater sampling that's ongoing, and it's going to be reevaluated once five years are up. But it has really been an interesting project to try these different remediation techniques. It's a very large site, and there's certain geology and hydrological components that we have to keep in mind, and from a science perspective, it has been really interesting to see different types of remedies being implemented, specific to what's needed for that specific area. And then that's where this phytoremediation came in, and it's just a nice thing to see. We have the area FNH plume source area, and this is the NC2 potassium per magnate injections that we did for chemical oxidation. And basically, a series of trenches were installed right around some of the former buildings, and there are these, it's a combination of infiltration and injection that we're monitoring on a routine basis. So for, we're seeing the concentrations reduced in most wells, and I'll talk about the next slide. And we talked about area F2, F3, and F4 within this larger area FH, and so we've met cleanup levels in one of the areas already. In the other two, you can see that there's been six infiltration events for F2, seven for F4, you know, pretty significant, 25,000, 27,000, 32,000 gallons have been, you know, implemented over here. The bottom line is this, so for Area F2, TCE concentrations have declined, you know, more than 88%, and for F4, the TCE concentrations have declined more than 91%. So once again, these are these routine measurements that we are asking to have collected so we can evaluate performance and see how these technologies are working, because the bottom-line goal is that we want to treat the source areas, and we want to treat groundwater, because that's where everything's, that's the focus area for us, and that's what we want to see addressed. For the distal plume, we're looking at monitored natural attenuation, which is really, you know, an interaction between the natural components and the relationship between the contamination and the geology and the hydrology of that particular area. And just sort of looking at it, it seemed like it would be a good idea to look at some enhancement through the injection of a lactate solution. And so what we're doing is we're looking at how things are going over here, and depending on some additional data that we receive, this is something that we're going to be having the consultant do next. Now, I'm going to talk about what's going on in the neighborhood. That was sort of all the onsite work with a little bit of overlap, but let's move into the neighborhood. This is something, I think, back in 2010, 2012, when we had another project manager, we were doing more frequent visits to City Council, because we had a lot going on at that time. And so this is just sort of a recap, where we had initiated some work, you know, in 2004. We had looked at the schools in the area, because those were things that everyone was concerned with, we wanted to make sure that everyone was safe. We did a pretty significant indoor evaluation of private homes and found that there was no additional action needed. What happened between 2007 and us revisiting this project in 2012 was that the threshold number that, from EPA, that we were using to make these determinations actually went lower. I think it was around 5 in 2007 and dropped to about a 1.5 approximately in 2012. And so that was a significant change, so we wanted to go back and take another look. And we did offer a very specific type of treatment to the homeowners in an abundance of caution, because the way we're looking at it, we are treating the groundwater very aggressively, and it's something that we know we're doing, and we are making a lot of efforts, working with Ramble, to reduce the plume. But in an overabundance and caution as another layer of protection, this was something that we offered to residents. So we made the offer to 41 homes based on a sort of combination of different things. We looked at previous detections of TCE in indoor air when we had done our earlier investigation. We looked at how the homes were placed on this plume that we had been tracking, and we also looked at some of the natural mitigative effects of the geology and the hydrology and how that all worked together. So that's how we made the decision to bring these 41 homes in. We've installed the systems in 21 homes, six homeowners declined, and we had several homeowners who refused to respond. We resend offers annually to those who haven't responded, and if we get information about new homeowners, if the house has changed hands, just to keep that as an ongoing measure. If somebody moves in, we want them to be aware of what's going on in the neighborhood and what they have the ability to take advantage of, should they choose to do so. And then for all the homes where the systems are installed, there's an ongoing process of operation and maintenance. Just one quick thing I wanted to point out is that, you know, in addition to the systems that we've installed for those who agreed to do it, the ones who decided not to have them installed, it is because we are doing a significant amount of monitoring the neighborhood as well. And so we have additional points of information, because DTSC works not with one piece of information. We try to take several pieces of information from different areas and bring that all together. And so there was never, you know, it's always great to have, because we love data, we make all of our decisions based on data, but if a homeowner doesn't want us in, we find another way to track their safety and make sure they're safe. Now, this is, this is what we have, this is kind of what we're working on right now. It's the current plan that we have on, this is Golden, this is the Golden West area?
Hillside Avenue.
Okay, this is Hillside Avenue and Third Street. And basically, we're embarking on the implementation of an in-place chemical reduction process. Zero valent iron is used to create like a treatment zone. And basically, the way it's oriented is the barrier is implemented like perpendicular to the groundwater flow, and as the TCE-impacted groundwater hits that barrier, it reduces the concentrations of TCE. So that's, that's the process, you know, from, on a more, you know, human scale. I know that we've sent some updates to the community about this, because we've had to work with different property owners, and we've got some traffic control that has been implemented in order to help us construct this barrier. And as far as I know, we haven't been, we haven't had any complaints, but that's something that we want to make sure that we keep in touch with the city. So if you guys hear anything, we'd like to know about it, to make sure that the residents aren't disturbed and everything, you know, is just minimally intrusive and minimally disruptive. The construction will be initiated, the full-scale construction will be initiated end of next month, and we anticipate it's going to take through to the end of the year to be fully done. So, you know, it brings us towards the end of the presentation, and sort of the bottom-line for me is that we're doing everything we can to ensure the residents are safe. We are monitoring the data that we receive to make sure that the groundwater treatment is working, because to us, that's the key, and there's ongoing efforts to clean up the plume, because that's what it's all about. It's reducing those groundwater concentrations, pulling them back closer and closer to the site, and using all of these different technologies to get to the, to the end game. We've, as you've seen, we've tried all these different technologies, very specific, based on what the specific requirements for the area. Groundwater and soil gas monitoring are ongoing. Everything that we have installed in private homes as a precautionary measure are functioning fine, and our technologies that we've used here are green and sustainable technologies. You know, we have a lot of sites where there's so many problems that are caused by just trying to dig everything out and take it away. These are true green technologies, and it's, from a scientific perspective, it's really nice, and from an effectiveness perspective, we're also seeing data that supports it. We have ongoing communication with the community, depending on what we have going on, and one of the things that I'd like to do is come up to you all and present here more often as we have information, and not kind of have these big gaps. So we'd like to come up maybe the next few months, when we have new information to share, and anytime you hear something from any of your constituents, we'd love to be brought in, and we can set up individual meetings, and just depending on what works for you. So I just wanted to put that offer out on the table on behalf of myself and DTSC. With that, I think we can open it up to questions.
Well, I want to thank you for showing up, because I don't know how many other councilors, but I got some inquiries when you were on Hillside by Third Street, and the question is what and who is doing that? So I'm glad you're here. And I'm going to save my last question, but I'm going to start down there. Greg, any questions?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Refresh my memory on, what was the name of the original project manager that started, I don't know, 12 years ago?
Yes, his name was Rafa Fabbassi.
Okay.
And I am related, is my husband.
All right.
Yes.
Because we would see him like every, every month.
Yes, yes. I do remember having dinner alone several times.
He was a good guy. Just a couple of questions on cleanup levels. Let's say TCE, for example. What is the level that you are comfortable with in cleanup, and what are you trying to achieve? Does that make sense, I guess, or, I mean, are you happy with like a 90% or a 95% level in cleanup?
I'm going to defer to John or Carol on this one, if you want to jump in on this.
The onsite?
So I just wanted to put that offer out on the table on behalf of myself and DTSC. With that, I think we can open it up to questions.
Well, I want to thank you for showing up because I don't know how many other councilors, but I got some inquiries when you were on Hillside by Third Street and the question is what and who is doing that? So I'm glad you're here. And I'm going to save my last question, but I'm going to start down there. Greg, any questions?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Refresh my memory on, what was the name of the original project manager that started, I don't know, 12 years ago?
Yes, his name was Rafa Dabassi.
Okay.
And I am related, it's my husband.
All right.
Yes.
Because we would see him like every, every month.
Yes, yes. I do remember having dinner alone several times.
He was a good guy. Just a couple of questions on cleanup levels. Let's say TCE, for example. What is the level that you are comfortable with in cleanup? And what are you trying to achieve? Does that make sense? I guess, or, I mean, are you happy with like a 90% or a 95% level in cleanup?
I'm going to defer to John or Carol on this one. If you want to jump in on this.
The onsite?
Can you? Yeah, please.
Sorry. The onsite cleanup levels are commercial industrial. So they're based on a future commercial industrial use and offsite is residential. So offsite and groundwater, we're trying to meet maximum contaminant levels in groundwater.
Is there a percentage with that?
There's not a percentage, it's a specific number. So for example, for TCE, the MCL is five micrograms per liter. So that's the number we're shooting for offsite.
Okay, and onsite?
It's a commercial number, so it's based on, it's based on a whole host of exposure assumptions. But the number I think we have now is 300 and something onsite.
Okay, so a commercial number would not be as restrictive as a residential number?
A commercial number is higher than a residential number because the exposures are different.
Okay.
So on a commercial use, somebody's working maybe eight hours a day, they're not, there's not a child eating soil, that kind of thing. So the residential numbers are stricter, they're lower, and the commercial numbers are higher.
Okay, so your numbers are going the other way.
Yes.
So onsite, it would have to be more restrictive. I think you said it all when you said letting your kid eat the dirt.
Yes.
Okay.
So for, so for the residential areas, the scenario on which we based that exposure is a child eating pounds and pounds of dirt every day for many, many years. And then, you know, as an adult, living in that house for I think 40, 50 years, don't quote me on it, there's a long-term assumption with how long a resident lives at the site. With the commercial industrial scenario, the reason why that number is so much higher is because the duration of exposure and the daily exposure rate is lower. So that's based on a different scenario of someone coming into work, leaving after a certain number of hours.
Right, and going home.
And not, not living in the same, not having the same job for 40, 50 years. So it's a different scenario.
Okay. How long do you anticipate that you will monitor this property? Is that a forever?
It's going to be a while. I mean, I mean, yes.
You couldn't narrow that down? So this site could still be under remediation for the next 30 years?
It could be.
Okay.
But if there were plans to reuse the property and redevelop the property, we would work and redesign a cleanup and work with the development to do whatever development needs to be done and say, okay, now we have to have specific mitigation measures. So suppose there were plans to build a hotel, for example. Our risk assessors and our toxicologists would work up a very specific exposure scenario for workers, construction, workers in the hotel, construction workers and people who would come and stay at the hotel. And the numbers would look a little bit different. And there may be other mitigation measures, like putting a vapor barrier down and doing some additional monitoring. So just because we're going to be cleaning up in the long term, I wanted to make it clear that in no way is that going to restrict development. There's going to be some discussion and some specific science-based decisions that we could implement to support some sort of development. But barring any of those plans, right now, we've got this broad 15 to 30 years because these are all, you know, there's contamination and there's stuff that we have to do and numbers that we have to see decreased. And we can't predict exactly when, when the cleanup will be achieved.
Okay.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Half of this site right now.
My last question is on the plume. Do you, can, I saw on the one graph that you had where you're welting, you seem to be shrinking the plume. But can plumes migrate? Can they just kind of up and start filtering over in other directions and?
Right, I mean, it's, it's, it is, it is fluid. I mean, that's exactly what it is. But the technologies we have in place right now, they're designed to produce a concentration and pull it in closer. And that's basically what you're seeing. So, so yes, there is a fluidity to it. And when we first embarked upon this process, we mapped it out and we contoured it and we knew that it was much, it was larger. And the whole point of these various treatment technologies is to bring it in closer and reduce it. And that's what we're achieving through these various cleanups that we have underway right now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Kevin?
So if somebody was going to put in 600 homes and call them a resort, are you aware of that? I mean, that's, they want to put in a resort with 600 homes? Would that 535, and does that change how long? Because obviously, that many people living there, how long would then take to clean up?
So we're, we haven't been engaged in any kind of discussion and reuse yet.
But that would change your model?
Yes, yes. If someone were to come to us and say that they wanted to, so if it's resort homes, John, why don't you come up and respond to this?
Right now, we're not aware of those proposals, but they could theoretically build that, that size of a development on the eastern half of the property, which has been completely cleared for unrestricted land use. However, of course, that has to go through your processes, the local zoning processes. Where they couldn't build is on the western half of the property where there's still ongoing remediation. So that part is actually restricted, is restricted from residential use. Also, schools, daycare centers and hospitals can't be built on that part of the property.
So Steve, isn't that exactly what they're proposing that?
Yeah, I haven't spent a lot of time reviewing what they've proposed, but yeah, they are proposing over the entire site, but they are avoiding the areas that have been identified by DTSC.
Where the trees are.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, because they're going to build all around the trees. Anyway, apparently, we can't discuss it, but I'm just curious. Thank you.
You can, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to, mainly what I wanted to find out is if they suddenly decide to build a lot of homes there, it obviously ups the level of cleanup you have to do.
Right, and I think the point that John made is that half of the 400 acres is unrestricted.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
And I think for the areas that we're currently working on, there would have to be discussion before anything could be done.
Gotcha, thank you.
You're welcome.
Berwin?
No.
Robin?
Hi, I just have a couple of questions. Who's paying for all of this remediation on the site?
So all of this work is being paid for a company called Arrow. I'm not sure about the series of acquisitions that happened, but while he was a property owner, Arrow got involved and they somehow, through that purchase, took on the liability. And so all of the things that we ask for and the things that we direct are paid for by Arrow. And Carol represents the consulting firm that's been retained by Arrow to do the work that we're directing.
Okay, and then I guess my other question is the systems that were put in for some of the houses around.
Yes.
You stated several times that it's precautionary. Was there any agreements with the people that own those houses that, you know, since we're putting these in, if something happens later, like is there a release of liability or any of that kind of stuff?
You know, I'm not sure.
Or I'm just wondering why money would be spent on putting in, I don't know how much the systems cost, but why somebody would spend money for a precautionary measure?
You know, I can answer that question generally, not specifically, because I wasn't involved in that one.
That's fine.
But, but, you know, we want to be, we want to demonstrate good government practices. Arrow, they want to be a good neighbor in the communities that they, that their property has impacted. So we've had lots of situations where people, people want some additional comfort and that additional comfort gives them enough peace that they're okay and, and we're comfortable that they're comfortable. And so sometimes we have to make these decisions when we have the ability to do so because we don't have a lot of sites where there is that level of engagement from the responsible party where we can ask that these kinds of things get done. In this case, I'd say that we were lucky enough that we were able to provide this additional comfort. And it's also another data point for us to be able to get more data. Like I was saying, our data is, all of our decisions are data-driven and this was another data point for us. So it was really more about being, just being good neighbors in that community.
Okay, and then the last question I had, just generally speaking, what are the long-term effects of having TCE in groundwater and the soil vapor from that chemical? Or is that unknown?
You mean like the exposure effects?
Yeah.
You know, I know it is, it is a, it is a known carcinogen and that's why this cleanup is so aggressive. From a groundwater protection standpoint...
Not at the groundwater.
Right.
So.
Yeah, no one's exposed to groundwater. We still look at some things in terms of like protecting groundwater resources, but there's no direct exposure to the groundwater pathway. And that's why all the data is being collected is because of the nature of TCE.
Okay, and then, sorry, one other question. The wells that you have in various locations, how are those included in that 15 to 30-year monitoring time?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's, that's all part of this ongoing, we've got all the systems in place, but then we need that additional monitoring to make sure the systems are working the way they should. So it's just, once again, providing multiple lines of evidence for us to understand what's going on in the community and making sure that everyone's safe. So it's just looking at things from different perspectives and that will be part of, part of what we require for the site long-term.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi.
Hello.
Good job, by the way, a nice summary. I guess, I'm sure some of the homeowners up there, if you can get us this presentation so we can have it for them when they live up there, that'd be great.
Absolutely, I'll fix the date and I will get it to show.
I do have a couple of questions. Initially, when you started this project, there was at least a 30-year, and you've already set up a 30-year term to clean this thing up before you're going. And so you've answered that one. But there are deed restrictions placed on the western section of that property, is that correct?
I believe so.
That were put in there that the property owner has agreed to and they, they're on title and they were done in the courts. Well, is it your office that would pull those restrictions off if they ever had to be off and at that time? And before, you would not pull any of those restrictions until you were satisfied, correct?
Yes, there, there's a lot of work that has to be done before we get to that point. And we have had situations where because of a development, we've modified deed restrictions. But that's, that's a deed restriction that we've placed. So we would be the ones being engaged and doing whatever adjustment needs to be done.
At the present time, on that western side of the property, the deed restrictions aren't in place. Typically, the way we enact deed restrictions is through land use covenants, which then are recorded with the county assessor's office. Those would all be put in place once the remediation is completed. I mean, that's the key thing. So at the end of, you know, whenever we determine the groundwater cleanup has met its goals, then at that point, we would sign the land use covenant with the property owner, you know, with the property owner to enact those deed restrictions.
And I know you guys have a website, Enviro, Enviro Store, right?
Yes.
Okay, and that's where I get my information because I check on it every once in a while. But it is good. I mean, that, and I appreciate you guys putting it out there. So if you could include that on your, when you send the information out for us, the webpage so other people can read it. Some of it I don't understand, but I do, I did understand part of the deed restriction. So thank you very much. Andy, anything?
No, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Welcome.
You did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Yes, Carol can say one thing?
Yeah. Well, we have a, we're recording it too, so that's why.
So I just wanted to bring up again that we're starting a big field operation in May and we will be affecting traffic on Hillside and Third Street for a period of time. So you may get calls from constituents. And that was one reason we gave you the community update because we just sent that out to everybody within a quarter mile of the site and also gave it to the principal and assistant principal at the high school, just so that everybody would be aware of what is going to happen and would understand that traffic might be affected in that area for a period of time.
Yeah, and Chad, you'll do some nixels on those? Just on the heavy day of traffic trace?
Yeah, as long as we have that information. Otherwise, by the way, I want to make a comment to the contractor is that you do need to make sure you have proper traffic controls in place. We've already had complaints from citizens and our own inspectors had to stop your contractor because of lack of flagmen, et cetera, in the area. So we do take it very seriously and we will shut you down if you don't have proper controls. So please make sure they have adequate staffing for every day they're out there.
Yeah, we've increased the setting from one...
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Well, we have something that, because I got emails too, other than what they gave, can we get something maybe from your office or do you think we need that? Something that we can then send out and let people know?
About the common activities?
Yeah, in other words, that we can send to residents when they send us emails.
Yeah.
Yeah, Larry Kleisner is the one that kind of keeps everybody informed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving right along. City Council Communication Reports on Regional Boards and Commissions. Start down there, Berwin.
Went to a long meeting today of the RTA Subcommittee Meeting. One of the main topics we discussed and voted on to send to the big board for next week is to go ahead and purchase or order 37 more new buses. About a year and a half ago, we had decided to order, I think, about 100 buses and order them so many at a time. So we ordered 30, going to order 37 more. And we'll be ready to take delivery in January. But RCTC, and this is going to go before the big board next week, they have a grant funds available for cities and Norco is one of them. I'll have all the details at the next meeting. It has to be voted on, but Norco is one of the cities set to receive some big bucks, like $237,000, isn't it Brian, on the...
Over a three-year period.
Yeah, over a three-year period for operations of transportation and part of the senior, senior center stuff and everything. But I'll give all the details on it in a couple of weeks after, at the next...
The grant works with seniors, handicap and as well as veterans.
Right.
All qualify for it.
Right, and so that'll help us out quite a bit. And I think Norco was the top money receiver on the, on the list of the cities. There were several cities in there, but that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Berwin. Keep getting us that money. Robin?
Nothing to report.
All right.
Chino Basin, DeSalter Meeting tomorrow. No other items. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin?
The RCA meeting was really short. We did hear about an eagle with an eight-foot wingspan. That was interesting. WRCO, I had spoken with Aaron and we had talked to him about districting. The League of Cities has actually attempted to fight districts at times, but part of the problem is the cities are split. That is changing though because some of the districts are upset, that are democratically held are upset that they're being accused of not giving fair representation. And they're also upset because so many of the districts turned Republican. So, but one of the things they have done is there have been more draconian attempts to do districting and the League of Cities feels they've been able to fight those. There is a Subcommittee at WRCO that's looking at the issue. I don't know if that will be something that will help us or not. I'm supposed to have a conference call with Aaron tomorrow and then I'll talk to Rick also at WRCO. I don't know if we want to send somebody, but after I read some of these other things, a lot of information was given. We have Legislative Action Day, April 18th in Sacramento. That's if we want to send somebody up and maybe fight for some of our causes. They've asked that SB1, that cities that advertise the initiative, to advertise the things they're getting now, as Ted pointed out today, it was a trailer bill. But our bridge and things like that were kind of indirectly, directly funded by that and they want... And they want to know if people will put up advertisements saying how good SB1 is. Apparently, there's quite a repeal movement moving forward. Some of the initiatives that are going down, one that is kind of scary is the initiative to repeal Prop 13 on business. It's being pushed forward by the public employee unions. Teachers have not yet weighed in. Needless to say, you want to put the final nail in businesses' coffins. By the way, you own a boarding business? And you bought your house 40 years ago? Guess what? You will now be a business and you will pay current property tax. Initiative, there's another initiative for a two-thirds vote on redirection, redefinition of fees and taxes. So for example, if this makes the ballot in November, it would be retroactive. So any, any tax initiatives that you pass would not be valid. AB 3037 is to bring back a form of redevelopment. Our own Sabrina Cervantes, which I think that the mayor's gonna talk about, 2123. She has increased the 90 days to the 180 days, which doesn't really help us in terms of the districting. Right now, it's 90 days. One of the things I talked to Andy about, which indirectly would apply to us per Andy, is AB 1912 requires a retropayment for JPAs. And as Andy described it to me, we are part of some JPAs, but we could sort of have some risk there, but you have to retroactively do the payments for their pensions. And the Southern California Air Quality District has decided that they're gonna start putting restrictions on truck depots. And so I think that they're only about seven or eight or 15 years too late. And WRCOG is also instituting something with CAL FIRE to do emergency planning. They want to see how many of their cities actually have an emergency plan in place. Apparently, from what I understand, we're ahead. We're ahead of some pretty big cities that don't have really good plans in place. So I was pleased to hear that. I'll let Ted touch the Veterans Committee. I went to a whole bunch of stuff, but those were the key ones. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Kevin. I'm gonna defer my Veterans comment, because I know Chef's sitting there, he probably wants to talk about April 16th. So we met, Councilman Bash and I met with Supervisor Tavalongi and some other members of the KMPG. And I'm gonna hold that off until the end of council session and other matters, we'll talk about that. But Mayor Protem, Grundmeier, myself, did have a telephone conversation and a conference call along with the city attorney and the city manager and the city clerk concerning the, the districting measure. There are some things, and like Kevin alluded to, Cervantes is trying to do this on additional 90 days. We have a lot that's coming up, and I'm not gonna belige the small audience we have here tonight with it. But on April 18th, we'll be making some decisions of what we're gonna do on this matter. So stay tuned and attend it. With that, we'll move right into item number two, City Council Consent Items. And I'm gonna ask for those, any, anybody want items pulled? I'm gonna pull A. Any other thing? B or C? Anybody want anything? Nope. All right. Have a motion to approve the rest.
That motion carries unanimously.
Yeah. I pulled A. Basically, I'd like to ask council to reconsider the agenda item on 6A. That was the appeal hearing I had. I had additional information and...
What you're asking, is it be agendized?
Agendized, re- agendized for reconsideration.
At the next council meeting.
At the next council meeting. Yeah, I can make the motion. And I'll second that.
Okay, I'm gonna do a verbal roll call vote, please. Councilmembers Newton?
I'm not privy to the additional information that my other council members have, so I'm gonna vote no.
Councilmembers Hannah?
No.
Grundmeier? Councilmember Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes.
That motion fails.
Okay. I'm gonna approve the rest then. All right, moving on.
That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item number four, Public Comments. The assignment persons in the audience wishing to address the City Council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Please complete the speaker card in the back of the room, presented to the city clerk, so that you may be recognized. You have three minutes.
Jim Pollard?
They go to the city clerk, ma'am. Evening, Jim.
Good evening, council, mayor, council members, city staff. Well, all of our lives are about stories. A little motion on this one. Today's my, I was in the US Army and I was a body escort. And 50 years ago today, I carried back the body of David Williams. And thank Brian and all the ones that put together the memorial that we have up at Ingalls Park, that there's a brick there for him today. And I want to thank the Kay Meyers and everybody involved in that. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Jim.
Jeff Cahann?
Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Just to echo what, what Jim was saying was, I think we're all aware that 50 years ago today, it's all over the news, Martin Luther King was assassinated. But Jim's story reminds us that other Americans died that day too. And we built that memorial to honor PFC David L. Williams and to honor Jim Pollard and to honor all of our veterans. So in 12 days, is April 16th. It's, it's George Ingalls Day. And I'm very proud to be a member of the Executive Committee. So I would like to invite the council, I would invite the staff, I'd like to invite all the residents to please come up to the Veterans Memorial on Monday, April 16th at 6:30 PM in the evening. It's after work, it's after school. Hopefully, that'll make it more available for people to come. And we can simply honor George Ingalls, who sacrificed himself, earning the Congressional Medal of Honor for his valor. And just to recognize all of the veterans, but specifically our, our Norco resident who we named our park after, who we named our memorial after. And we know that this town values our veterans. We're a patriotic town. I know it's on a Monday night. Last year, we had a lot of people show up on Easter for the 50th anniversary. So appreciate the support that the council has shown, the Veterans Memorial over the years, support for the committee. Brian couldn't have done it without you. And all the veterans on the committee and the supporters of the residents. So just wanted to invite you out for that. And then I'm gonna switch hats for just a second in my few seconds I have remaining. As a parishioner of Grace Norco Fellowship, I appreciate that we have "In God We Trust" on the wall. I appreciate that we can have invocations here and, and pray in Jesus' name and have invocations and benedictions at our public meetings, at our memorial. I'm just a little disappointed that for Easter, our church wanted to put up a sign on the Sixth Street Gateway. And normally, if it just said, "Come to Easter service, 8:30 and 10 o'clock," that would have been okay, which is apparently what we had to settle for. We wanted to just simply add the phrase, "He has risen." And that was a little bit, I guess, too controversial. And I know that there's a line somewhere. But I'd like to ask you to re, whatever the word is, you know, either agendize it or ask EDAC to look at those rules and see if we can figure out a way without going to the Supreme Court over something as simple as, as a phrase like that, that we can put on the sign. Because I know that it's not just for us, it's for any other church in the, in the community that might want to advertise either Christmas, Easter. We changed the name of the Winter Festival to Christmas. So I know that we've got that kind of support. I'd just like to figure out a way we can bump the boundaries just a little bit. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sure the city attorney will probably enlighten us how we, how we can do that. Oh, how we can, yes.
Roxanna Warkeiser?
Good evening, Roxanna.
I'm really out of my element. Really out of my element. I've lived in Norco 33 years and I love this city so much. Right now, I want the city to join Los Alamos and Huntington Beach and go against the sanctuary state law. I think it's, it's unheard of that in our constitution in California, it says we will never deviate or leave the union. And they have done it, we're doing it. This state is causing us, the taxpayers, so much money in legal fees because they're fighting everything the federal government wants. It's like we're our own entity. They wanna, Brown has just made it his country, his law, he's God, and it's enough. And I want the City Council to join face with Huntington Beach and Los Alamos and stand up for the rights of the red-blooded American citizens. Thank you.
At last, our meeting last month, we voted to agendize that in a future meeting in June.
Mayor, that concludes Public Comments.
See, no more cards, they're closed, public hearing. All right. Public, yeah. Public comments, I'm sorry. Okay, moving on to 5A, Verbal Presentation of the Annual Fire Department Update. Chief Scott Lane?
Okay, Chad tells me I have three minutes. Oh, two. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, staff and residents. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to review the department as a whole, as well as the 2017 statistics for the city of Norco. A little background, CAL FIRE was established in 1885. It's the largest fire agency in the state of California. 7,000 employees and we serve as the county fire department in 26 of California's 58 counties, including Riverside. Our relationship with the county goes back to a wildland agreement in 1921. We were established as the county fire department in '46. The first partner city was the city of Beaumont in 1978. And we are tasked with enforcing Ordinance 787 from the county. We currently have 20 partner cities, one community service district of Rubido, 1,500 personnel, and 325 sworn firefighters on duty every day. Some of the programs we do provide is CAL FIRE hand crews, of which four are based here in the city. Our aircraft program, where we strive to have an air tanker on sight of any wildland fire within 20 minutes throughout the state of California. That's how our air bases are strategically placed. We house one in Hemet, which has one air attack, two air tankers and one helicopter. The helicopter is staffed seven days a week, currently is only able to fly during the day. However, we're in the process of procuring Firehawks, which are essentially Black Hawks built for the fire department, which will have the night flying capabilities. And we expect to start seeing those in about three years. Our closest one is based across the valley at Chino, right next to the Institute for MIT. Type 1 fire engines in the bottom, we see in our municipal setting, are brush engines. There are 17 state-owned and operated fire engines every day in the county of Riverside. And then paramedic squads. Throughout the county, there's 92 staffed fire stations. We have 99 engine companies per day, six paramedic squads, 10 ambulances. Those are all based out in the Coachella Valley. Eight truck companies, our closest one for the city comes from Glen Avon. Three conservation camps for a total of 17 inmate fire crews in the county. Three bulldozers, one staffed water tender, a type 1 hazardous materials team, two breathing supports, which respond to structure fires and hazardous materials calls with us to replenish our air supply. Six urban search and rescue units are strategically placed throughout the county. They're cross-staffed with the truck companies. Whether it be a confined space, a trench rescue, a high-angle rope rescue, those units are cross-staffed and fully equipped with all the shoring and all the technical rescue needs that we have throughout the county. And we have significant search capacity in all of our program areas. That's one thing that, that Norco's greatly benefited from, is when we have an incident, you immediately notice that your stations are covered with additional fire apparatus that are moved in. CAL FIRE Riverside County Fire Department, same way, see directs these many resources to any emergency regardless of partner jurisdiction, utilizing a boundary drop concept. This ideologically, ideologically is basis of regionalized, integrated cooperative fire protection system. And it is recommended or recognized throughout the state. It is the only one like it in the state. And I added this slide because I want you to see where all your fire engines come from on an immediate need basis. So we have three in the city. The city funds two of them, the state funds the third one on the south end of town. You'll notice this north of us, Eastville, has Station 31 and Station 27 that they fund. City of Arupa Valley funds Station 16, 17 and 18. And then Rubido funds Station 38. In the south end of the map, you have Station 1382, 8 and 4, that are all funded by the county. And that's that partnership, that layered partnership that we're talking about. State, county and local. As I mentioned previously, we do have one air attack, two air tankers and one helicopter. The benefit of having that helicopter is it delivers a nine-person wildland firefighting crew and it also conducts hoist rescues. It is used a couple of times a week in this county for hoist rescues. And for the city, our closest one does come from Prado Helotech Base, which is just across the valley. Has about a three-minute flight time to be to the city. Training EMS, we conduct a Clark Training Center out in Riverside. It's at the old March Air Force Base. In 2017, the Training EMS Bureau has conducted two truck academies, five tiller academies. And those are two very separate classes, but one is to teach the firefighters all the responsibilities of being on the ladder truck and the other one's how to drive it. And as you've seen, there's a driver in the front and the rear, so it's a, it's a process. 12 new higher fire academies, five engineer orientation academies, six engineer CPT classes. And what that is, is last year, every engineer, every driver of fire apparatus had to go through Clark Training for 40 hours. And they had to drive and pump every single apparatus that we have. And there are many versions of everything that we do have. And they spent 40 hours doing it. 23 rescue courses through the state fire marshal, 28 CAL FIRE courses and provided training to more than 7,000 students. The law enforcement prevention program is a team of eight of our police officers that started as firefighters and went through our post academy and our CAL FIRE academy in Hialeah. And they conduct fire arson investigations, cause and origin determination of fires. They are sworn police officers, they assist locals when requested, as they've done here previously with fireworks enforcement. They oversee the juvenile fire center program. And 2017, like I mentioned, there's only eight of them. They handled 631 case files, 3,100 hours of investigation, 87 arrests, 59 were felonies and 176 citations. Public education, as you know, is very important to us and we try to reach the community as much as we can through the various programs in the city and the special events. The Fire Marshal's Office, which we have two in the city, we have a fire safety specialist and fire safety inspector. But overall, our, the Fire Marshal's But overall, out of the fire marshal's office, 13,000 plan reviews and 38,000 new license and fire safety inspections. Another service that's provided through the agreement is the service in our warehouse where all our supplies come from. So, that is part of the cooperative agreement where the city doesn't directly pay for the supplies used at the fire station, whether it's fire hose or nozzles, whatever goes on the fire engine, it's all included in that agreement. Fleet is also included in the agreement to where we have field mechanics and the parish shop. And that is all part of cost allocation, so there is no bill back as the county, as the city engages in the engine use agreement. Our mechanics handle as much as they can and sometimes have to send it out to vendors, but that's all included in the contract as well. Our headquarters in Paris, for those that have visited it, houses all of our executive staff, does the payroll for 1,500 employees, and also houses finance, the public information office, their photographers and chaplains. Our emergency command center, of which we need to get to the second tour for council and staff, dispatchs 164,000 calls for service in 2017. When I started in 1994, we had 44,000 calls, so it's gone up dramatically through the years. 2018 should reach 170,000 calls, and it's more than 450 calls for service a day. We have implemented emergency medical dispatch, which is going to be required or is required of every EMS agency in the county by, by the county, by 2021. And so, as part of responding to the additional call load, the county is mandating that we come up a way to prioritize the highest level of call for the highest level of service. So, currently, we have fully implemented EMD, and it may result in some calls being what's termed Code Two and non-lights and sirens response, which is actually beneficial to Horstown USA. But essentially, prior to this, and this is an international program, prior to this, if you called us for stub toe three days ago, we'd go lights and sirens because that's, that was our system. Now, when you call 911 to the parish command center, patient care starts at the dispatcher, and they have an entire card set. So, whatever your answers are, they lead down to them providing care over the phone. And many times, they stay on the phone, even providing CPR instructions until we arrive. They can administer aspirin over the phone for a heart attack if the criteria is met. So, it is a phenomenal program that gives rhyme to the reason of what they're doing. In July, we'll also implement EFD, which is the same set of questions that will be asked for any fires that are reported. So, of old, it would be if you call for your outlet that's sparking, we may send four engines and a chief. Well, if it quits sparking, in the future, we may just send one, things of that nature. So, it's a whole dynamic of questions to have to ask. Instant activity, we expected to grow between 2006 and 2017. It's increased by 46%, and we anticipate it to grow steadily going on in the future. Population in 2006, 1.9 million of the county, and expected in 2021 to be 2.5 million. Similarly, 2006, our incidents were 112,000, and you can see the climb to last year at And just one other thing to note is that command center dispatched 164,000 calls. They received about 450,000 phone calls in 2017. Average responses, 2006, 307 per day throughout the 92 fire stations, and to last year, 452. Our department did a salary study of our two adjoining counties that are similarly staffed and as large as we are. And for staffing only, not including everything else that goes in it, fuel, hose, all fire apparatus, Orange County is at 2.3 million for staffing personnel only per station. LA County is at 2.1, and Riverside County is at 1.3. Big part of that is our work week is two days longer. We work 72-hour shifts and they work the 56. In the Northwest Division, you'll recognize Chief Adulamont is our interim division chief, myself with the city of Norco, my partner, Rich Owens, I believe you all know. And then across the river, we share Dan Harris with Arupa Valley and Justin Scribner with Eastvale. Every day, seven days a week, one of us is on with the division in the coverage. Many days, two of us are on, sharing the responsibility for all the area, the Northwest Division, it's called. And just as a reminder for Norco, Fire Station 47 on Hillside is staffed every day with a paramedic engine. It has three people, a captain, an engineer, and a firefighter/paramedic. It houses the division chief that's currently vacant, and Chief Owens' office and I. One fire safety specialist, Sandy Hastings, is there, and our new fire systems inspector, Kevin Shin. Station 57 on Coridon is also staffed with a paramedic engine, also city-funded, and is also staffed with a captain, engineer, and paramedic firefighter. It's the home of NART, and Captain Weatherhold also oversees CERT. Station 14 is state-owned and operated. It's the Hamner Fire Station, but like I mentioned before, with its layers of regional fire protection, it responds first out to the city all day, every day, at no cost to the city. And it is staffed with a captain and two firefighters that are EMTs. It is the city's to use because we do dispatch by GPS in the closest resource until the state needs it. And once it's doing its state mission, typically, we get another one moved up to cover the station, but ultimately, it's owned and responsibility of the state. Our 2017 city responses, overall, 2,553 last year. I included my favorite map, and again, you can kind of see our partner fire stations to the north and to the south, and a little bit of our stations in there, but you can see it's a pretty equal spread of the calls throughout the city. 330 fires, 2,000 medical aids, 72 hazards, eight hazmats, and then the miscellaneous calls. And one thing I like to highlight here is this is another breakdown of our calls for last year, but our average response time is four minutes. The goal countywide is five, and in incorporated city, and our average in Norco is four, and that's a testament to the firefighters that are on the street every day, getting to the calls safely and rendering aid. So, with that, I'd just like to say we're proud to serve Norco. As you're all aware, the firefighters love being here. It's very easy to recruit them to come here because word spreads of how supportive this city is to public safety. So, thank you for letting us be Norco's fire department. With that, I'll take any questions.
Council, have any questions of the battalion chief? Berwin, I know you do.
Thanks. Thanks for a good report, chief. That's very encouraging. We have good coverage, and all the neighbors around that have long to CalFire come and help you guys out. We really appreciate it. Thank you much.
Robin?
Good job, sir.
Kevin?
So, we get two battalion chiefs because we're the center of the universe and the greatest city in the United States, is that it?
And you only pay for one.
Yeah, how come we get two?
Jerry's paying for the other one.
Don't tell him.
Don't bad-bell Jerry. Good job.
Were you asking about that state money? He's paying for one of them and one engine in the city. Well, actually, two of them, the division chief's state-funded as well.
That's because we have the mix of the two states, the stations, state and county? Thank you.
Greg?
Chief, good report.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for letting me be able to swear on the PA system.
We weren't supposed to talk about that. That was between us.
Chief, as always, thank your troops. They always make us look good, no matter what they do. But you lead a good, you lead a good bunch of guys that have demonstrated that they are far and beyond what we thought we were getting. So, what, it's five, six years ago? You've matched and surpassed those expectations, so thank you guys for that.
Well, I appreciate the kind words, and I'll absolutely pass it on to the troops.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll take a motion to receive and file. Moved. Did you get that, Sheriff?
Yes, please vote. The motion carries unanimously.
Moving right on to 6A. This is a public hearing on ordinance number 1032, first reading. And this would be, Steve, is this you?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a proposed zone change to change the existing zoning of C4 to CG. This is consistent with the project that was approved by the planning commission on July 12, 2017, for a gas station, convenience store, and car wash at that property. The, I don't know what else to say. I blew it. I misreported the zone as being CG, and that's how the planning commission approved it. This is a cleanup item. The C4 zone does not allow gas stations. It doesn't affect the approval of the CUP, but the zone has to change so they can build the project. Planning commission heard this and recommended approval unanimously.
So, that concludes your...Greg, want to go out in there and chew him out for it, or...
Absolutely. Steve? If you're not making mistakes, you're not doing enough work.
Kevin? No, I got to go through, ask staff. This I know. I'm following my notes this time. Robin? Berwin? All right, this is a public hearing. Open to public hearing. Any cards?
Yes, Mayor, I have one card. Pat Overstreet?
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Well, as I did before the planning commission, I'm here to beg forgiveness for Steve King. And I'm hoping that you will pass this because I support this project 100% and can't wait to see it finished. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Mayor, that's all the cards on this item.
Since he's our applicant, I have to ask, do you have a first and a second? Go ahead, Sheriff.
Okay, please vote. That motion carries unanimously.
All right, we go into seven, city council, city manager, staff communications. I'm going to start this off. Last week, or it's been almost two weeks, we met with Supervisor Tavilongi, the gentleman from KNPG, along with, who else was there, Kevin? One of the county, yeah, his consultants in there. Yeah, okay. So, anyway, they were trying to sell us the, this KNPG project that they want to do through to the three cities on this end that are under Harupa Station, to include Harupa Valley, Eastvale, and the city of Norco. And the way it was presented was if, it's either all or none. Unless, if you've got something else, Lieutenant Brady, I'll entertain that. And looking at how they're doing it, and one of the things I wanted to share you, and here's something that we need, they need a decision by April 12 on this, to see if they're going to do it or not. So, rather than having staff or two council people do it, I thought, well, we should come back to the city council, get an idea of what you think. They are going to, they are redoing how they provide, under this new KNPG program, how they provide staffing to the cities and to the county area. Essentially, they want to see, and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, they actually expect sergeants to take calls for service. They want all the corporals to take calls for service, which is not unusual. But they will take control of it, and they will direct where our staffing goes. Not, and since, one of the things that, and it was brought to my attention was, our sergeants are not dedicated positions. We have two here that the sheriff's department stations here to supervise and kind of do things here in the city for our deputies and to make sure things run smoothly. I know the lieutenant uses them quite heavily to do the administrative work and along that and doing special projects here in the city. My feeling is, if this thing goes, we may lose those because they're not dedicated positions. If we were to dedicate those positions, it would be an additional $477,000, almost $478,000 a year to our contract to have them dedicated, which we're getting a pretty good deal right now from the sheriff's department for the use of those two sergeants. So, Andy, do you have anything more you want to add to that, or?
What, what are you looking for?
Well, I just want, need to have some background on it.
I mean, what in terms of...
Well, we're going to have to make a decision by April 12. This is already April 4. So, I'm asking that we probably ought to...
If you want, I suppose, I mean, obviously, there's, we don't have a council meeting before then.
Right.
If by a four-fifth vote, given the urgency, if you want to agendize it, you can talk about it and...
Okay, well, then, I'm going to ask my fellow council members if we want to agendize this tonight so we can vote on it. Yes.
Councilmembers Hannah? Newton? Bash? Mayor Portem? Gudnemeyer? Mayor Hoffman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Back to what I was saying on this thing. They need, the supervisor needs to know by April 12. This isn't about politics or anything else like this. It's about how to do service. And yes, this is a program that they put together. They started in the county station in Hemet and ran it to try to cut back their response times and to show a better service per deputy. They've done it in the county station in Lake Elsinore. This was the first attempt to do it in the contract cities, and they felt that using the city of Norco, Harupa Valley, and Eastvale, they would get a good combination and a good survey based upon the fact that we're rural and somewhat heavy residential with Eastvale. Initially, when we talked about this, we don't have that big of staff, to be honest with you. We got two deputies on at a time. We have our cops guys, and of course, our sergeants. So, for us, the impact could be greater than if we lose on this deployment. So, I'm just bringing that up there. That's my tune on it. Berwin? You don't get to vote yet, Berwin.
I hit the wrong button. No, I don't, I don't think that'll do us any good. I was looking at what, some of the stuff that went on down there at Hemet and those areas where they tried to do it. It might work if they did a little bit more time, but I don't want to lose our sergeants. I don't want our bill going up any higher than what it is. So, I think we're, in my opinion, we're better off just to stay like we are.
Robin?
What little reading I've done about it just was kind of happenstance on social media, and from what I read, the results were not positive. But obviously, that's on social media, so it needs to be taken with a grain of salt. I guess where I'm coming from as an elected official, if this was a priority for our supervisor, we should be given more than, more time to make an adequate and informed decision than saying, "We need to know by April 12 on April 4." And so, that particular item is of great concern to me, especially when another elected knows how bureaucracy works and how long it takes for something to get through the system. And this... And this can't be a new idea, because they've tried it at other places. So at this point in time, I would lean towards keeping things the way they are.
Kevin?
I think you make some good points, Robin, very good points. And I don't know, I think we have a really great Sheriff's Department. For a city our size, we have our own substation, we shouldn't have that. I mean, we work really hard to get the best deputies, we get good sergeants, we always feel like when we lose one chief of police, then we think, oh my God, what's going to happen now? The world's ending, then we get a better chief of police. And I really like your, your position on that, Robin. I mean, why would he? The other thing, too, he asked us after Harupa Valley and after Eastvale. We're the, and he'd know we're the first contract city, and he should have talked to us first. So maybe let Harupa Valley and Eastvale do the experiment. And I have to admit, I've, I was very impressed with our mayor, because as he said, he didn't say anything for like 20 minutes. I'm going, God, what's he thinking? What's he thinking? And then he just kind of took every one of their arguments and just really nicely, just kind of, like a sushi chef. So I kind of have to agree with the council so far.
Craig?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with all your comments, and, you know, Tavoloni should know better than ask us to make a decision at the last minute, and that, I'm so confident in the way Eric runs his department, and your sergeants and all your deputies, you have a great team. I don't need anybody else, especially a consultant screwing with it, okay? So I guess that's my answer.
Thank you. I've never been called a sushi chef before, but, because I caught him off-guard, because he forgot that I worked for him, he forgot I worked for him for 26 years. And some of the comments they made were just way out, way out in right field, and I just, it didn't make any sense. And I understand they have to justify the $44 million they spent on this, but all I have seen on when people from outside of law enforcement try to manage law enforcement, they don't understand it. They don't understand this is not just a nice, okay, it's a nine-to-five situation, or you can put, and I hate, now Sacramento does it, and I see other big agencies do it, let's lump everything in the same basket or in the same rules. And you can't do that. Deployment of law enforcement, yeah, you have to do certain deployment things, but it's very fluid. And if you think you can manage it by just taking numbers and moving bodies and bodies around here or there, without understanding how to, the service you're providing, because some investigations, you can get them all done in an hour, and you'll be done and gone out, and maybe make a hook. Other ones, you'll spend three or four days, and you can't manage people like this, office out of charts and graphs. So with that, I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and we decline the opportunity to be in this KNPG study with the Sheriff's Department.
Council members, Hannah? Roll call vote? We have a motion in a second.
Yeah.
The motion is to decline the opportunity to, yes. What is your vote?
We're not voting on the thing. It's a roll call.
I need to do a verbal vote. What is your vote? Yes? Councilmember Newton? Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Portem, Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. With that, I had a little, oh, also, Andy, and the other thing, the Riverside Transmission, utility transmission line, that's coming up, correct?
Yes, the city, the city, yeah, City Quark is sending out information on that. I believe there is a public workshop scheduled, there is a public workshop scheduled for April 24 and 25, but before that, there is also a workshop that is scheduled for, for the cities that are in the impacted areas. I believe that's on?
April 19.
April 19. So in that information, the, at least, the executive summary of the report will be posted on the city's website, and based on that, you can, there are several locations where you can actually get a copy of the full report or view the full report, which is a report that is about two inches thick.
And that, Andy, and when we did this before, I think we sent a letter, either pro con towards us, we did, we were against it. Are we going to do that same type of thing?
Yes, the planning director and staff and other staff, we're going to be reviewing the report as, the draft report that is being exposed to the public, and based on that review, we would submit appropriate comments either as part of the public workshop and also in writing to the CPUC.
Okay, we look forward to that. Thank you.
Ted? Oh, I'm sorry. I wanted to ask Andy a question on that topic. On the review of that EIR, Public Works and Planning will review that?
Yes.
Okay. And then, if I remember correctly, the public meetings, you're not allowed to comment? There was something I read in there that you can attend it, but you're not allowed to comment verbally?
I haven't read that report yet. It might be, well, it'd be true, but I'm not.
Would you double-check on that, please? Okay, thank you.
Craig? Robin? Berwin anymore?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. At the Horse Week Parade, the RTA is going to bring their trolley again to run in the parade. I think Kevin rode in it last year, so I'll announce this again at the next meeting, but if anybody wants to ride in the parade on the trolley, well, you're welcome. And one more thing, Steve, what's the latest on our bus stop over on River Road?
We're still working with them. The, we need to remind them, but we're still working with them.
Yeah, let's jack them up and get it going there, because this has gone on long enough with them trying to hide behind that imaginary fence over there. Thank you.
Kevin?
I'd like to have one thing. I'm wondering if, Andy, at some point, we might get a status report on our history room and that kind of thing, just to sort of see where we're at, how the cataloging is going, what Chuck's progress is. It's nothing critical, but I think that, I would just like to, because we bought computers for them, I'd like to see what they're doing there, and given what happened today, I think it would be nice just to get an update. That's all. Thank you.
Craig? Cheryl? Matt, how we doing over there? Okay? You made me sound good the other night, thank you. Chad?
Two items for the public. April 14 is our next community cleanup up at Ingalls, between 8 o'clock and 12 on that date. So if you have materials that you've been looking to dispose of that aren't hazardous waste, like batteries and, or paints, feel free to bring them up, and you can dispose them up at that event. It was very well-attended and successful the last year, so, and we'll have a second one in October, so this won't be the only one for the year, but, so take advantage of it. The second item is, again, we do have a water main project that has begun on Valley View between 6 and River Drive, so there will be periodic closures of River, of Valley View if different segments, or there'll be delineations around. So it's just hit or miss when you're out there, so please be patient. We should be done with that project within the next 60 days, but it is an important project that we need to get done, because it's a terrible water line that we need to replace. So.
Okay, so that's, that's your water line project, is there a flood control project going in there at the same time? It's supposed to be starting soon?
There is a flood control project. It's, we don't have a date as far as they're redoing the actual north channel itself, redoing the walls in the main channel, and then, once that's done, we're trying to get a, start our next project for stormwater on that street that will help benefit the residents, specifically, one of the benefits is for leaps and bounds, to get some of that water that goes through their property, and they can, we can channelize it and get it back into the street and reduce some of those impacts. So, yes.
Okay, thank you. Steve? Brian?
Yeah.
Gina?
Scott?
No.
You said enough, okay. Eric?
No, sir, I just thank you for the support.
How easy to do, sir. All right, with that, adjourn.